All right, we'll call the August 16th City Council meeting to order. Mr. Smith, will you give us the prayer pledge in fact of the day, please, sir?
Let us assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious and almighty God, once again, we come before your presence in the humblest manner that we know how. Thankful for all the blessings that have been bestowed upon us. As we come tonight, our Father, we pray for our first responders that was involved in an accident. Our Father, and all the others that was also involved, we pray for a speedy recovery. For God, we pray for their families, or God, that they too will be encouraged. And we thank you now for this opportunity for us to be servants of this community. We pray that all that we shall say and do will be pleasing and acceptable in thy sight. In thy son, Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On August 17th, 1943, US General George S. Patton and his 7th Army arrived in Messina several hours before the British Field Marshal Bernard Earl Montgomery and his 8th Army went in the unofficial race to Messina and competing the Allied conquest to Sicily. Fact of the day.
All right, got five sets of minutes. Look for motion to approve.
Yeah, I let Clerk Bowen know just a few Scrivener's errors here and there. Nothing major, some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries announced. All right, well, we all know what happened last weekend. Our had a great first time dog mayor contest 2023 to be continued and years and years and years to come. So want to just going to do a couple of things here, and then I'm going to let the the instigators or the promoters of this this great contest come forward and kind of give us kind of the back the backstory on how this all got started and where we are today. So anyway, just want to give you, here's the we've got, all right, we got, yeah, Mayor Asher, there you go. Yes, yes, yes.
I didn't question it for a second.
With all the patriotic hardware behind him. Vice Chair Lola, that represents the bully up rescue, I'm sorry, the second chance rescue is for Mayor Asher. Our third one is Commissioner Kobe, an advocate for the Husky Haven of Florida. Commissioner Jarvis, an advocate for the CARE Foundation. And Commissioner Murphy, an advocate for the Sun Coast Basset Rescue. So anyway, I want to have Caitlin come on up, and if you got anybody you'd like to bring up, the team, and and then you can you can introduce the mayor, dog mayor, come on up. Yes, 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 awesome. Thank you, ladies.
Hello again. I'm Ella Duke, Propagate Social House, Halls on 5th and Main Street of Apopka. So the dog mayor competition or election was one of the first events that us as Main Street of Apopka wanted to put out there. We thought that it was going to be a great way to bring some wholesome, positive community fund to Apopka. And I want to thank my cohort, Caitlin Koscheta from Koscheta Farms, Christina, and our treasurer from Main Street of Apopka, Jen Few, for all of the help that we had during the event. I think out of all the things we've ever done, this one's one of my favorites. I'll just be honest. Hi, everybody, nice to see you all again. Christina, thanks for coming and bringing our new dog mayor, our first ever dog mayor. So as you guys know, we had Election Day last weekend on August 5th, and we walked into that event having raised over the last 30 days about 70, let's see, $6,600. That's that was pretty impressive considering we had no bar to reach in the first place. So we were just thrilled at that. And I remember when Commissioner Nesta came up to the table, and he was kind of trying to get the low down on where everybody was at. I said, I think we might break $10,000, I don't know, I just have this feeling. Well, in the last hour that the polls were open, we raised another $13,208, bringing the total amount raised for these pet rescues to $19,808. And so for our very first ever shot at this, we thought that was pretty fantastic, seeing how the city in California that does this regularly for the last 15 years typically raises 25,000. So we can officially say that honestly, across the nation, we were getting in votes. We even got a few votes from Australia. I don't know who we know over there, but they liked what we were doing. So Apopka is on the map, thanks to Mayor Asher and all of the dogs that participated. And we just had so much fun doing all this, we're very excited to keep doing it. I did want to obviously thank you all for your support, because you guys were instrumental in getting the word out there. You each cast your votes for your favorite candidates. But I did want to say a very special thanks to Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Nesta, because you guys just truly went above and beyond any expectations that we honestly, we didn't even pretend to have expectations, but y'all just blew us away with your efforts out in the community. I know you guys did a lot of fundraising yourselves and awareness raising, so thank you so much, I really appreciate that. And to express this thanks particularly to the winner, Commissioner Nesta, Christina and Asher do have a little gift for you, some photos of the event in a frame, so we'll get that over to you right when we're done. So with all of that, I guess I just have one question, who's the mayor? Picture with everybody, that would be so great. We'll just go right there.
Yeah, we tried to pull this, pulled it off Fox, the national news, we just couldn't couldn't figure out a way to do it. So maybe we'll get back on next year, we'll figure out a way. All right, next up, you've already gotten it, all right, Blant Sherman.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Just want to give you a brief presentation in regards to the City of Apopka's investment transactions for the past two or three years. Keeping in mind that the goal is to not concentrate all of the city's investments in one bank or deposits. Allowing for diversity and maximizing our investment earnings is another goal. Also, while keeping in mind the safety and liquidity as the number one priority. This slide is just an overview of some of the deposits that we've made since January of 2021 with the Sanovis Bank, One Florida Bank, Florida Prime, which is the SBA, and Seacoast National Bank. What I've highlighted is some of the transfers, some of the large transfers that we made from one bank to another bank. The June 2021 was the $29 million transfer from Sanovis Bank to One Florida Bank. In July of 2022, there was a $20 million transfer from Sanovis Bank to Florida Prime. And in June of 2023, we made a $31 million transfer from One Florida Bank to Seacoast Bank. In regards to those transfers, the One Florida wire that was made on June 8th of 2021, again, in the amount of 29 million from Sanovis Bank to One Florida Bank. At that time, the staff determined that the rates being offered by Sanovis Bank was lower than the rates that were being offered by One Florida Bank and SBA as well. So that was the rationale for them making that particular transfer. In regards to the wire on July 21st, 2022, in the amount of $20 million from Sanovis Bank to SBA. Sanovis Bank interest rate at that time was .35, One Florida Bank at .5, SBA interest rate was 1.8%. On June 8th, a third wire in the amount of $31.932 million was made from One Florida Bank to Seacoast Bank. At that time, One Florida Bank was at the 4.7 and decided that they would not go up to the 5.2. Seacoast Bank interest rate was 5.2, that was after taking a CD that had matured and turn converting that to a money market account, they were at the 5.2, and Sanovis Bank was at the 5.2. We made that transfer to the Seacoast Bank. For them, they offered to go up to the 5.2 with a $25 million deposit minimum. Because of all of the concerns and comments that have been made about the various transfers, we did ask for a legal opinion on the one from Sanovis Bank to One Florida Bank that happened in 2021. That legal opinion is attached. Also, we have our attorney here that can comment on that opinion if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions for either Blant or for Shepherd?
Yeah. Who, I guess, did you come up with this yourself, or who asked you to come to bring this to the council?
The mayor.
Okay. Attorney Shepherd, who requested your legal opinion on this?
I don't know in which order, but some combination of the mayor and Ms. Sherman.
How much did it cost us to get this opinion?
That I don't know, I haven't gone and run the bills yet, we haven't at that point of the month. I can get them for you, I could get it for you tomorrow, I just don't know on top of my head.
That'd be great to know. Sure. For many reasons, but the biggest one is that you don't exclusively work for the mayor. I would normally see something like this, any of your opinions, I would think, would be under the attorney's report, especially if we had asked for it, but we didn't. Additionally, too, the documents that were provided still show, and I'm not going to take a deep dive in this, because I didn't specifically ask for this to be done, they still show inconsistency, so even the data that was provided, it still shows information that is inaccurate. And I think you two are being used as pawns in a game that the mayor is trying to play. And Mr. Mayor, and I'll just say this to put a finer point on last week or last meeting, you think that we're all trying to get gotcha moments on you? And there'd be nothing to get if you wouldn't do sketchy things behind the scenes. So stop trying to hide things, stop trying to be above the residents and our and the rest of the council, and we wouldn't have gotcha moments. So with that being said, I still think there needs to be a forensic audit.
So you haven't, you know, tell me what what you see is the the things that I've done wrong on this, these transactions.
I'm not going to tell you, if you don't know, and I'm sure you do, that's the thing. And I don't need you to edit any of the evidence that may be coming up. And again, I hope that I'm completely wrong. I hope this is a waste of time. But, you know, we sure weren't wrong about the lie that you were censured for. So either way, I don't have any additional questions. This was a waste of both of you guys' time and now our more residents' money, because our attorney's on a forensic auditor, so.
So we're going to spend more money on a forensic auditor, which.
Nobody's told you to spend money on an attorney for this. You chose that on yourself, you keep spending money only on the stuff that you find valuable, and then anything that the rest of the council finds valuable, you say no to.
So you so you looked at the numbers, so just just so you're aware, the the numbers between the two, when we moved the money from one, or from from Sanovis to One Florida, if you go back to the, when that original transaction was done, we had, we made about 1.3 million more in, or even 100 and.
150.
Yeah, there was no millions there.
Okay, 150,000 more, and since you you came on to the council, it was 110,000 more. So we've made more money because we moved that 31 million to One Florida than we then.
Well, keep in mind, too, you guys, you guys moved it without any approvals for .02%, not not a word, and you moved that. I requested that it was moved for over, almost a percentage point, a full percentage point, until at One Florida, it was a half a percent. For $30 million, and you guys fought me tooth and nail until I was finally able to get that approved and help the residents. So again, is it impropriety, is it?
What impropriety, did it, we moved the money based on Cliff Shepherd's legal, we we've done it according to policy.
Correct.
I've read the policy over and over and over. Ms. Sherman has requested I do that, which I'm fine with. That was not what, that is not up to the, what our policy states. We're supposed to be reviewing, we should, every year, per our policy, we should be reviewing our investment strategy. The council should be, not staff, the council should be, it specifically states that. I've never seen that happen, I know I haven't been a part of it.
Well, the three, if, I may, and I know Commissioner, you made a comment during the briefings, and I'm hoping that you bring that up. The three transactions per the review by legal counsel are in compliance with the procedures under the policy. They do not require counsel authority, even though some transactions were brought to counsel. Again, I spoke with Mr. Bass before he passed about this particular transaction, because Commissioner Velazquez brought it up to me, and I wanted to understand the rationale and the procedure behind it. That's what he shared with me at that particular time. I understand that there are some concerns, and maybe you want all certain levels to come to counsel for approval. That was something that Commissioner Becker brought up in our briefings, maybe set a threshold in the policy where the Finance Director, Mayor, and City Administrator, you can go up to, say, $10 million. And beyond that, you need to bring that before counsel. Currently, we have the Investment Advisor, we have them under contract, they're reviewing our policy now. They're going to bring that to this council for input and comment. You will have that opportunity to change those procedures at that time.
And that's fine, you want to change procedures, change the procedures, I've got no problem with that.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things at play here, the first thing that was brought up was, you know, legal opinions. And this is the second one where we're not getting the full opinion until well after the fact. I mean, there was one about the charter interpretation of the council's authority over the city attorney before, that was presented in the last meeting, that that was the first time we were seeing it during the meeting. There's this one, I think the memo was as of two days ago, which was the comprehensive one. Yeah, that was a summary memo within our within our sheets. But as soon as you all get these memos, because it is going to the mayor, again, we can go down this road again, the council serves at the pleasure of the board, not the not the mayor singularly. So we need to get this as soon as you all are getting them, so we can have a better prepared conversation up here. Secondarily, just for the purposes of the people in this room, our investment policy is dated 1995. I mean.
And we're still not even following that.
Yeah, we are, yes, we are. Where are we not following?
And that's and that's the real, that's the real, kind of the main, the first, the first main point is, you know, there is some inconsistency in its application. Again, as put in the packet that was included today, that we discussed on Monday, we did, as a formal agenda item, back when it was first moved, the $2 million from Iberia at the time, over to One Florida. But then, a much larger transaction of the 29 million happened without any sort of council scrutiny. The real question, why, why did that happen? Because it should be a common application of how you're interpreting the policy. And if $2 million is worthy of a council vote, certainly $29 million is. Then then elsewhere in the policy, and to your to your point, what we discussed on Monday, there are provisions in there. There's one of two options that the Investment Officer, which, you know, I don't know who has that that title on their on their business card here at the City of Apopka, whether it's the Finance Director or the mayor. But there's a couple of different avenues by which you can move money. Kind of unilateral method of doing it by the Investment Officer to say, hey, as long as the rates are higher than what we've currently got, and I'm acting as a fiduciary agent for the city responsibly, there's that that authority. That's where my biggest point of contention is. $29 million as a representation of our entire general fund expenditure is is a considerable material amount percentage wise. So having one singular person within the city having that level of authority to make that sort of move, that's where I disagree with the policy, that's where I think we need to update the policy. Again, future, yeah, that's future looking, I'm not.
Got no problem.
What I'm, what I'm not clear on is the specificity of what Commissioner Nesta's, you know, bringing up here. And I would love to know it so I can kind of get better my head wrapped around it. But yeah, for me, it's, you know, the policy is significantly outdated, and we need to do something about that. But I'll I'll yield, and I don't know when, if if we're going to talk about specifics about what what we think, because again, our attorney has rendered an opinion saying that adhered to policy, there seems to be some difference of opinion, I just want to see what that difference is.
Well, you know, I think I'm along the same line, and that was something that I had brought up over and over again when you first came on, and when this all came up, and I said, it's not, it was the the procedure, the policy, that they thought it was important to bring 2 million before the board, and then follow through and wire transfer 29 million, and the board was not aware of it. They didn't even have a consultation to say, you know what, this bank is giving us a little bit more, we're going to go ahead and move another 29 million. And that's what I said, I just said, why was 2 million important and not 29 million? And then you, of course, suggested, now that JP Morgan is is kind of going through all our investments, that that would, we should suggest, because as the board up here, we are affect policy and and operation, that we should suggest that. So that in the future, we don't have this kind of issue come up and become such a thorn, and no one really providing us why it was done that way. And I agree with him, and I did speak to our city attorney about opinions, that if he makes an opinion, and he does it, you know, at the request of the chair, that we get notified the same time, and and according to the city attorney, that when he does provide the opinion, he does state for distribution, meaning that each of us should get it. The last council meeting, we literally got it at the end of the meeting, and, you know, there was not enough time to even read the entire opinion. And then this opinion, when I got it, I had to ask for the attachment, because there was none. And then that was provided, and then each commissioner was given the same attachment, which is by far, I don't know how many pages.
93.
93.
Well, the reason I wanted to get it out before 5:00 on Friday, so I said, Cliff Shepherd, can you at least give me something to put in the packet so you'd have it? We didn't have it ready until Monday or whenever you got, so it wasn't a.
We go today at 4:00.
No, we received it on Friday, we put it in the agenda, that's the summary one, the summary one. The other one, when he sent it, sent it to me, I immediately sent it out to you.
We got it at 4:00 today.
I don't know, I got an email, I immediately.
I did get it.
You got it, yeah.
I did get it, because when I came.
Yeah, and I sent it out to all of you. That same day.
And 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 I guess to Nesta's point is, if 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 an opinion is being solicited, which is the right of the chair to 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 solicit an opinion, but just let the council know that, you know, I'm soliciting an opinion, and it at least gives us the, you know, we've been notified, because one of the things I think I've said over and over and over again is the lack of communication, the lack of information. I don't appreciate coming to council and learning about something during the meeting when we should have knowledge of it so that we can process it. I think it's only fair to ask that of the staff, of our city attorney, and of course, our chair. Anything that's important, that's got to come before a public meeting, should come to us with enough time for us to process the information. It's the only thing I've asked for probably in the last year and a half since I've been sitting here.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
My only comment is going to be that I looked at the policy that was sent to us. I looked at the opinion from the city attorney and based on the policy, the procedures was followed from what I read. If we feel that the policy is outdated, it needs to be changed and we just need to do that. Make the change and move forward.
Perfect. And who's going to take that? I mean.
JP Bargan is working on it now.
Okay.
Updating the policy. Yeah. You requested that when we, they came in for an introduction meeting and they're working on it.
Yeah, because I think there should be an approval matrix as part of that.
Yeah. They will come and give you all the proposed changes and take in your comments. Okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blanche. Appreciate it. Okay. Cliff, any changes to the agenda?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. All right. Public comments. Susan.
Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem, Apopka. Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's heartening for me today to see our esteemed commissioners take the steps that they need to do to protect our funds and protect the integrity of this city. I have numerous concerns that we are not doing the best for the city employees or the city residents. There, in my opinion, is discrepancies in how we're treating mental health in the city. It recently became to, to me to see that one of the PD officers had her contract terminated because she had applied to get some, some help. That to me, I don't understand what we're doing. National statistics are such that 16, 16.26% of the national US population over the age of 12 suffer from some sort of substance abuse. That means one in six people have some issue with a substance abuse. You can Google that and you'll come up with those facts. If I look at the dais here, we have six people here. We have six people who all have stressful positions. So potentially someone here has anxiety or whatever it may take. What are we doing within the city to resolve problems for our staff? Let's just speak about one thing. Let's be honest. I'm not going to be popular when I, when I mention anxiety because everybody suffers from it. And a lot of people have medication and those medical situations are, are protected information. But what does cause me concern is that if someone with knowingly mixed alcohol with tranquilizers, and those tranquilizers are prescribed and there's a warning on them not to be taken with alcohol, then in my opinion, at that point, whoever was doing that would be breaking the oath of office because they don't have the ability to continue doing the job in a manner that they should be doing it. You know, one of the things for, for anxiety, the side effects are people falling asleep, confusion and incoherent behavior. I see that regularly in this city. You know, we all know who falls asleep at the dais. I can't see why they're falling asleep at the dais. But if anyone here is deliberately mixing alcohol with a prescription drug, as far as I'm concerned, that's serious. Because that same person was seen with a set of keys in front of his, his dais and it upsets me that, that we have the potential for children to be hurt. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McKimmy, do me a favor. Go back to your corner and come up with 15 bucks. I'll do a pee test tomorrow morning. So you, if you think I'm on drugs, why don't you write, gather up 15 dollars, bring it down here and I'll have, I'll have the test tomorrow morning, first thing.
Prescription drugs are fine. Nothing against prescription drugs.
No, I'm good.
If you knowingly mix alcohol with prescription drugs, it's a problem.
Bobby Boy.
Good evening. I'd like to, looking forward to the concerts at the Ampla Theater. And I'd like to also thank Commissioner Nesta for helping me and supporting on several issues that have been coming to my life lately. And off that issue is the Boy Scout Road. I live, I have 23, Bobby Boy, 2317 Boy Scout Road where they're doing all the tearing up and tearing down. We were promised to have the materials in our driveways, a light material replaced. And although it was, it's not completed on the sides. So the sides of my concrete driveway couldn't be breaking off. But I'd had these, the driveway and my mailbox approach stabilized for 28 years. And the, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get, we got somebody from Public Works. I want him to write down.
Oh, okay. But the, the driveway, the approach for the mailbox, for the, the mail trucks, where they come up on the grass, I had had that stabilized for 28 years with rock and concrete powder. Now the, they were digging it out. You know, you stop, you take off and it kicks out the dirt and it also kicks out the grass. And now it's now nice and dry. It's gotten an even deeper hold. And I was, I was promised that to be replaced. It has not been. I know all the materials have been moved somewhere else rather than almost across the street, 100 foot away. The, the other issue is my, how place next door had concrete asphalt. I don't think they had enough asphalt in there to fill in. I think they were a little bit short. And so the, the, the compression machine did not get it weighed down. So every time my renter goes out, he, you stop at the top of the berm there and he, the loose asphalt crumbles kick, kick out. It's about a hole about yay deep, about almost a foot deep, where it's kicked up a hump of stuff. It's just not staying in place, not stabilized. It's, it's stuff that I have text, texted the project manager on there for several times for the last eight months or so. That I'm just looking for those jobs to be completed. It's something that's not going to be bothered if it's with that roundabout and stuff like that coming in. It's not something that would have to be changed or taken out at that time because that area, I think it's going to be stabilized, to my understanding, on the roundabout. Anyway, that was sort of on, just, I, I know that Pam had said she did a drive-by, but she didn't see anything major. But the thing is, you can't drive by and see the shadowed sunlight and stuff on the black asphalt to see that there was a big hole there. And my other thing was that, just a quick comment on the new Windexy and the parking lot is a disaster. In an emergency or anything, customers are trying to get out and the emergency vehicles are going to be trying to get in. It's, that's, I'm not sure how that got approved anyway. But I think the grand opening was a little bit premature too because we had, what, nine pieces of heavy equipment wandering around while customers are trying to wait in line for, to get into the store for the grand opening. All right. That's basically
Thank you.
my points. Thank you.
Okay, Shante.
And school board member Burt, come on forward.
Hello, council. How are you? It's good to see you tonight. Thank you for allowing Shante and I to speak just for a minute. We are very excited about a new reading initiative that we're going to start this year. I know you all are familiar with Read Around the City that we've been doing in Apopka for a few years now. We've had great success with that. The kids, the kids love it. They go around and read and visit businesses. But Shante came to me and said, I think this needs to be bigger. I think we need to expand it to more schools. And I also think that we need to get the community involved as well with the reading. So we are doing Read Around the City in all of my school district for the school board, District Seven, which goes all through Acoee and Winter Garden area and the Apopka area this year. And we've added a little fun piece to the competition where community members can read and log their own minutes and assign those minutes to the school of their choice. And there's going to be competition between the schools to who gets the most reading minutes. And this competition is going to last from September 1st to January 31st, right? Yeah. So there's a good amount of time. The goal is a million minutes in District Seven, which I think we can do because now today she told me she's got UCF on board. They want to join in on the fun because they said, we're always reading. So we're just trying to bring a little bit of joy, the joy of reading back. And we want kids to get the message that everyone enjoys reading and that it's, when you learn how to read when you're a child, it can stay with you your whole life. So we want to show them that us adults like to read too. So that's the goal and we are asking for your help promoting the program. We're going to have flyers, digital flyers. You can post on your social media. I've got some flyers for you tonight. And then I also brought you a special gift that you can save until September. So you can start reading in September and logging your minutes. So I'm going to come pass this out for you. Did you want to say anything, Shante?
Just really quick. The cool thing about it is they don't have to live in the state of Florida. If you have family anywhere in the country, out of the country, they can also log into the app. You can read emails. It doesn't have to be a book. Whatever you're reading, it counts towards the minutes. And we're also looking for sponsors for the schools because we will be offering incentives for the schools to keep them reading. So we ask that you guys just continue to support us. Thank you, Commissioner Nesta and Randall for purchasing the app for us for the next two years and Commissioner Velazquez for helping us get the marketing and our videos out. So thank you and look forward for you guys reading with us on September 1st.
So we get to kind of sponsor a school?
You can sponsor a school or you can sponsor the district as a whole. So even with your minutes, when you log into the community app, you can choose the school or you can choose it as the district as a whole. And same with sponsorships.
Okay. Is there, you know, sort of what the sponsorship is for each of the schools or?
Yes. On my website, it's all set up on the landing page. We set it up today. So it went live today. So you guys can see how that looks.
Oh, thank you. You must have, you must. Okay, listen, listen. You must have been hearing my prayers. Thank you so much, Melissa. It's a generous gift.
All right, Rod Olson.
Which one did you get?
Thank you for getting that overhead for me. Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. Few comments. One, with regard to the budget process. I was very disappointed with the workshops because of the inconsistencies with the numbers. And I know there was a software issue. All of you had questions at various points in doing it. But the question is now, with we're getting ready to put this thing forward, how confident are you in the numbers now? That's the critical question. Plus, when you look at our growth, the drainage issues, streets, staffing challenges, do we have what we need to move to a proactive versus our current reactive mode of operation? Next, and we have the overhead here is Northwest Recreation Complex Athletic Agreements. My four granddaughters all played rec soccer. Reached a point, I coached them through most of those years, reached a point where they wanted to improve their skill set, wanted to improve, wanted to play more competitive ball, which became the Central Florida Soccer Club. Apopka Parks and Recreation, I said Mr. Radley in a couple of different occasions that, that, and there were no corrections that they made at that point. At any rate, there's a substantial difference in the utilization hours and rates charged for the Apopka Raptors, which is a football program, Pop Warner, Apopka Little League, which is 27 baseball teams and eight softball teams under the guidance. When you look at the annual fees, $1,200 for five months for the Raptors, $2,500 for five months for the Pop Warner, $3,500 for Little League, again, that's based on 100 bucks per team, hence the $3,500. And Central Florida Soccer Club, $51,000 for eight months. You break that down to a monthly fee, Raptors, 240 bucks, Pop Warner, $500 per month, Little League, $292 a month, and Central Florida Soccer Club, $6,375 per month. And if you factor in even further, the aspect of the number of fields used, the hours available for it, it gets, gets out of hand. So right now, Central Florida Soccer Club is paying 13 to 27 times what these other youth programs are doing. When you break it down to cost per hour for fields, Raptors are paying 53 cents an hour, Pop Warner, $1.11, Little League, 65 cents, and Central Florida Soccer Club, $98 an hour. That's 88 to 185 times what the other groups are doing. Calling the three programs, program agreements and declaring Central Florida Soccer Club as a rental agreement is circumventing what should be done for all these programs that serve the youth of Apopka. All these programs offer scholarships for those players or families that can't afford. All these players offer, offer recreational competitive play and all these players have, and all these players are exposed to some, I think some outstanding training. Central Florida Soccer Club should not be treated differently. I recommend for 2023 that Central Florida Soccer pay the $500 as Pop Warner, the highest of the other group that's doing at this point. Plus, the field utilization for the regular games, not tournaments, should be incorporated with that as all, as well as with the other, other, the others, other organizations. 2024 is a new year. We can renegotiate things. If you brought the Apopka Raptors, if you brought Pop Warner and Little League to play to it, you're talking about a 13 to 185 times what they're currently paying. If you establish a rate, and I'm proposing a rate of $2,000 a month for all these organizations, still represents Pop, Raptors paying eight times what they are currently, Pop Warner four times, and Little League seven. Thank you. I hope you take this into consideration. I thank you for your time and efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Radley. Sylvester Hall.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Sylvester Hall, 3901 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka, Florida. For the last almost two years, I think we don't have roughly to this date about 40 city council meetings. I've been present for 38 of those 40. And I say, when I come here and I look at how the city is run, it's kind of, you know, you have to smile to keep from pulling your hair out. Everything that, and you see, it ain't too much there, right? But everything that we talk about, it can be done. We all want love. We all want harmony. It can be done with simple leadership doing what they're supposed to do. So when you hear me saying we, when we normalize the abnormal, we're in trouble. Now, let me, let me, you know, desensitize the truth. Let me give you an example of that. And I'm going to go back to the homeless meeting I was in the other night. You got $160,000 that was donated by somebody to give to the homeless, and we, we say we got a homeless problem here, to help assist and give some assistance to the homeless and the build, and the business, local business. And we take that $160,000 and we do something else with it. And it was given to us for that purpose. Now, when you look at the board for the homeless program, Mayor Nelson is one of the board members. So if you wanted that $160,000 to go to an ARC, you could simply make it happen. It don't happen. It don't happen, and we still go through with the dog and pony show. Now, with the police department, I'm very disappointed in Chief McKinley right now because where my daughter lives at, the Oaks Land, the overlooks over there, there was racist remarks spray painted on the cars. And the only reason my daughter didn't get, her car didn't get spray painted because it was in the garage. And it was brought to my attention, and I started checking the news, and I didn't see nothing on the news. So I brought it up, and I shouldn't have to. There's a video going out, there's a video that's out there, and the public still haven't seen the video, of people of interest. If you get that out right away to the public, you have a greater chance of solving your crime. And that's just looking at it from a common sense point of view. But my thing is, when I look on the other hand with Chief McKinley, he's been here almost eight years. He's been advocating for more budget money to get new officers. I said the officers should start at 60,000. They got a training facility where they train on the outside. Everybody know what the weather has been like lately. Imagine you're in full gear and you out there training. But when we look at the budget, you all have the power to grant that and make it happen overnight. All we had to do is raise the mileage, and we can get these things that needs to be done. I see Mr. Glenn Brooks is here now behind me. What he did to Leroy Bell in one city council meeting, what he did to me in one city council meeting, was abnormal, but we normalize it, and he's still here. I said then, he would have been fired if I was the mayor, he would have been fired.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Leslie Garrett.
Garrett, Leslie, 2277 Windsor Crest Loop, Apopka. I just want to give you a little backstory of who I am and why I'm here. Seven years ago, or 10 years ago when the Apopka tennis facility was created, I have girls that want to play tennis. And being that I'm a taxpayer and it's a city park, I felt that park should have been free to play tennis. I refused to pay because I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner. The police was called to drag me out of there, frighten my seven-year-old and 10-year-old daughter. We've been training there for the last 10 to 12 years. I do the training. I have a daughter now, put in tons of hours, full scholarship, UCF, three years ago, spent a summer playing on the tour professionally. And we come back home to one of the courts being leased out or contract out to Galaxy Tennis. Wasn't so much of an issue at that point, but we knew it was coming because we knew he owned the business and everything was self-interest to him. Since he's been here, we've had nothing but issues, nothing but problems. Some of them you've heard of, some of them was just swept underneath the rug. One of those issues was with myself. One of those issues was with Alyssa's Nova, that. One of those issue, I believe, was with Carol. Issues after issues after issues. Now, it said that the city's growing, and it said that we have a shortage of courts. Well, if he's taken up 50 to 75% of those courts and leave one to the taxpayer, one I was told several weeks ago, now because of the changes at the park, for me to work with my daughters and some of the girls who I bring, as you know, iron sharp and iron, and I did that with my older daughter as well, I was forced to get insurance, forced. While everybody else in the park, basketball players, everything is free. 35 feet away, the basketball court is for me, and I don't see a difference. Only difference I see is one net is longer than the other. They're both asphalt. We both sweat and run, but I felt cheated. I felt bad for my girls, being that we were dragged out of there, told that, you know, we were going to call the police. It just so happened that the police that did come out was my neighbor. I turned around the next day and I did the same thing. Police come out again. And Mr. Becker, you guys remember that? And here we are again with one of the courts being leased out, and the public, taxpayers, have nowhere to play but one court. Now, we're going through all these regulation changes at the park, as the gentleman back there was saying, everything is just getting more expensive. I mean, what do we do? Where do we go? That's our park. We live in Apopka. Thank you.
Michael Duran.
Hi, Durant Clermont. I just wanted to thank you Commissioners. Last week's meeting, beginning of this meeting, is pretty indicative of what we've been fighting with over a year. But I think we're making some headway. We did get the staff that the fire department needed, moving into this year, adding the three captains, the position for the safety and training chief, I think is imperative. So I wanted to thank you guys. This has been a really tough battle for me since the loss of my son. And I feel proud of what I've done, my family, and you Commissioners, and people from the public, that has come into this city council, week after week, and fought for something that we felt was right and something that was needed. We've advocated to saving lives and to fortify training within our fire department. I want to thank Chief McKinley during the Zoom meeting and the committee to discuss the James Engel Group. Chief McKinley has brought up some very valid points that I would like to echo that on the consent item number five tonight, to bring in the James Engel Group. I've read their literature probably now over a year ago that was provided to me from Chief Wyler. It is definitely a group that is capable of bringing the leadership and the management that this department is desperate of needing. I would like to echo Chief McKinley that I think that the James Engel Group could add some more days on site, work on, when they're doing the policies, work on that accreditation at the same time. I think it's very important for the department that we get that done in this first year. I really want to thank everybody that has done what they've done in this last year, Mr. Hall, Dennis New, just people from the public, firefighters alike, and you Commissioners. I feel that this is almost one of the last pieces of the puzzle that myself and my family has fought for, for this last year. So I hope that you approve this consent item number five to offer the contract to the James Engel Group. Thank you.
Is it it? Okay. All right. Next up, we've got seven items on consent. Look for a motion to approve the seven consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,017.
Ordinance number 3,017, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from office to mixed use for a portion of certain real property located at 225 East 7th Street, owned by Community Health Centers, Inc., comprising of one and a half acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3,017.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3,018.
Ordinance number 3,018, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Word of Life Church, Apopka, located at 1853 Vic Road, comprising 5.73 acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, council reports. Commissioner Velazquez, you want to start us out?
Okay, well, everyone kind of realized that today was the grand opening for Winn-Dixie. It was a good day. I know there were some snags along the way, but we got it done, and I really have to thank our city staff because they, they worked to make sure that when they opened those doors, that they were able to accept the thousands of people that walked through that door today. We were there, the mayor, Nick Nesta stopped by, and Commissioner Smith, and we spent some time in the store just greeting all the shoppers that came in and took another tour of the store, and it's a beautiful store. So I'm looking forward to it, kind of anchoring it at the city center and start to bring in different businesses that will come in because it will have the foot traffic from the supermarket. During the meeting, we spoke about the homeless. I did attend that meeting at the Next Step Foundation. It gave me an opportunity to kind of hear some of the concerns from the pastors and the ministers. So I have to say this, that each of the churches that were there, and the pastors and the ministers, each of them provide a vital service to help the City of Apopka address some of the homeless issues that we have going on. And the one thing I got from that meeting was that what they're looking for was some sort of central location in order to put together a resource center. And what we don't have in the city is a facility for them to start this, you know, resource center. But from it, I kind of walked away feeling that the stock for the, what they're looking for is that each of them have a house of worship, a church. Our churches are really open two to three days a week, and I felt if they wanted to kind of get this off the ground, that was, that each church kind of, or two or three churches, either open up their church one day a week and provide certain services and to kind of use a software program so that they all know what they're each doing. But I'm having a meeting on Monday with one of the members from Next Step, and I'm just, as one of the Commissioners, we all, I know that we all want to address this program, the homeless, and we all are concerned about it. We are concerned, of course, during the CRA, some of the businesses that are thriving have concerns, and we certainly want our city to succeed with businesses, and they were right. We only have one, one opportunity to make an impression. And at the same time, the churches are asking us to help them, so I hope that we can partner with, of course, our police department, our fire department, our ministry, our ministers, our pastors, to see how we can all work together to try and address this problem. So that was the one step. Give me a moment, and I have to thank Pastor David for, for leading that. Of course, we all attended the Florida League of Cities this past week. It was a three-day conference, and as always, I always walk away from it gaining some knowledge, some networking. We always look to see how other cities are succeeding, how they're growing, and it helps us to kind of tap on to some of those ideas, so I always look forward to doing that. Saturday, we had a huge paid concert that went on. I understand there was like over, almost 10,000 concert goers, but we had gotten some, I think some of us up here did receive some good news regarding that we didn't have a parking facility, a parking, we had a contract for a parking vendor, and we didn't have them, and we utilized our Boy Scouts, Troop 11, and I understand they did an excellent job in, believe it or not, if we had 10,000 people, imagine how many cars we had there, and they parked it, no problem, and they did an excellent job. So I'd like to recognize Troop 211. Also, there was an incident that involved a young Boy Scout who was, his job was to count cars, and while he was doing that, he observed a person that was in a vehicle that appeared not to be breathing well, and he made some calls, and he got the fire department to come, and they removed the gentleman from the vehicle, and he helped to save a life of someone there. So I'd like to, at some point, really recognize this young man. I don't want to put out his name right now, but I think he deserves to be recognized because for a young Boy Scout to be that observant, counting thousands of cars, to realize that someone was in need, and he did the right thing, we should recognize that. And it sets an example that, you know, our Boy Scouts, not only did they park as many cars as they did orderly, but that they also saved a life. So I did speak to our chief administrator, and he said that he would do something so that we can recognize this young man. Also, we had two very well-known community residents pass away, one that I personally do know, and that his son is a firefighter, Mr. Edward Baumann, he passed away, he's a Vietnam veteran, and he will be a service for him this weekend, and another resident that was very well-known and a longtime resident, Mr. Tony Hurst, Mr. Anthony, and we knew him as Tony Hurst, he also passed away this weekend, and passed away, and we will have a service for him. And also, I just wanted to give my condolences. Our Commissioners here, Nick Nester, his wife's grandfather passed away this week, and of course, Commissioner Becker, he had a very close aunt pass away this week. So my condolences to everyone and to the families if they're tuning in, to Mr. Edward Baumann, who was a very good friend, and Mr. Tony Hurst, who was also a very good friend. With that, I'll yield.
Coincidentally enough, the Boy Scout, who Commissioner Velazquez referenced, is a life rank in the Boy Scouts, so saved a life, and he's a life scout, so.
Oh, is that what he is?
I fully agree. I think, I think it would be well if we, if we honored them and all of those that were associated with that particular event to help out in terms of assistance. Another thing, because it's been brought up in the CRA meeting as well as just now, is regarding the Resource Center, again, there's meetings- is regarding the Resource Center, again, there's meetings that are happening. I believe the most recent one, I'm reading on the Apopka Critic of all places. I mean, we need to get this formally in our calendar, whoever needs to be in charge of that, because what's going to happen is that people are going to have sidebar conversations, and we're going to, it's going to end up right where it was the first time that we talked about the Apopka Resource Center. Everybody's got a different opinion about what it is. There's not this cohesive kind of pressure testing of ideas prior to coming to saying, hey, let's fund this. So my, from my, on social media, I saw that it's on the 29th of this month at 6:00. I have no idea where it's at.
First Presbyterian.
So if those can get on the commissioner's formal calendar and noticed so that, you know, we don't violate sunshine law when we go there, I think it would be in the best interest of everybody, just so that we're all kind of rowing in the same direction.
When is it?
The 29th of this month, is when I saw.
I mean, I'm fine noticing, just, we just, then we have to be very careful in what we say, we can't.
Yeah. What I don't want to have happen is that it's going to happen what happened the last time. And again, the backstory here was, it was the Duke Energy money that was originally earmarked for 150K for this purpose.
Correct.
It got to council, I think, at one point. It was just loosely earmarked, never formally voted on, and there was never really in-depth conversation. And so what happened is you had people that were very interested in happening, coming to city council meetings with kind of false expectations. What we need to do is make sure that, A, we understand the problem that we're trying to solve, we have an inventory of what, how big that problem is. I say problem, that's a bad choice of words, but just the issue that we're trying to solve, what exactly the solution that we're trying to implement, and whether or not 150K is even going to address it. Could be more than that, could be less than that, I don't know. But, you know, I was out of town last weekend, and I was understood that there was a couple meetings while I was out of town, but I, in all honesty, I didn't know they were happening. So if we can get them formally on our calendar, even if it's not even fully noticed, I think we all know the sunshine law well enough to not to violate it, you know? If it's not properly noticed, we can attend the meeting, but we can't really talk about potential voting if another party is there. But if no other party is there, we can be free to voice our opinions on the matter. So if that can happen, that would be much appreciated. Thirdly, and to address Mr. Leslie's remarks earlier, you know, tennis is in a really precarious position right now. I don't think any of the parties involved are happy at this point. Facts of the matter are, there is one party that does have a firm contract at this point. Can't change that right now. It's a binding contract. But what we can do is, you know, address this thing outside of the heat of the moment, and I mean that literally, because it's hot out when these things are happening. But, you know, we've got to have some sort of mechanism. I know that, Mr. Williams, you've done some policy changes and things like that, but somehow, we've got to get everybody in the room together, and we all have level heads to discuss this thing. I don't know if it's a workshop item or what, but, you know, yeah, we have additional tennis courts in the budget for next year, but again, those things take time, right? I mean, it's not going to happen overnight, and this problem is going to persist. And so we just need to come up with some solutions to this problem. I think there are solutions available, it's just we've got to sit down and talk through those. The next piece under charter, and Mr. Shepherd, thank you again for running at the ground in terms of our, what municode was reflected in terms of our charter. Mr. McKinney had brought this to all of our attention at some point, he gave us a packet worth of material. But in section 1.01, there was some sentence that was truncated that omitted a pretty critical piece of our charter, and the fact that we're a strong mayor form of government. So, you know, one of the very first things that's noteworthy in our charter had been truncated out of it. Through your research, it's due to municode or Civic Plus erroneously truncating that sentence, and so that led me to believe, well, led me to wonder what other things are wrong within municode as it relates to our charter. We've talked about in previous meetings having a charter review. We have not had a charter review in probably over a decade. This is our guiding principle documents, our constitution of our city. And so it's always worthwhile to go back and refresh it, look at it, make sure that it's still relevant to today's times. And again, it's, when we talk charter, you think this big, huge, meaty document, it's six articles. It's eight pages, I think we've said?
Eight pages.
But this is what kind of shapes who we are as Apopka in terms of our form of government, in terms of our, if we wanted, term limits or things like that are all discussed within that charter. In previous meetings, our attorney has recommended other two paths, the one where the city council leads that charter review versus trying to organize a full community review, which can be at times a little lumpy in its execution, but not foregoing the important inputs from the general public when we go through these sessions. So, you know, in the last meeting, in the minutes that we recorded, I said that I would bring back my recommendation and get it out in front of you, but again, we're entering into another election cycle in March, and inevitably, these are topics that come up during every single campaign, every election cycle within the city of Apopka. It's things like single-member districts, things like term limits, things like forms of government. And so it's, it would be great if we can go and talk to those people during that time when people are running for election to say, hey, we've put some thought around this, these are the things that we want to take forward so that people can have a voice in saying, hey, I agree and vote for it, or I don't agree and I vote it down. But it gives us absolute certainty of the will of the people. I don't think that it's going to be, so my recommendation would be, is to go to the recommendation of the attorney, have a council-led charter review, which I think we can incorporate Articles 1 through 3 in a two-hour session prior to the next night meeting, as well as Articles 4 through 6, the two hours before the October meeting. That gives the November meetings, whether it's the day meeting or the night meeting, for public comment to say, these are our formal recommendations, we get public comment, because it's my understanding, really, December is kind of the drop-dead date by which we can get it on the ballot in preparation for.
December 12th.
Excuse me?
December 12th.
December 12th. So basically, by the first meeting in December, you would need to have kind of a thumbs-up, thumbs-down of any potential change. We may go through these sessions and say, hey, we're good with how it is, and the public could say that we agree with you, or you're just bonkers and you're crazy, and keep going at it. But I think it would be, I think it would give the public just reassurance that we're willing to look at ourselves in the mirror and say, hey, are we doing things the right way? So that would be my recommendation. I don't know if there's other interest by the council. I know that, again, when we've campaigned for these seats in the past, we've made that commitment in one fashion or the other. I think it's time that we kind of put our money where our mouth is.
Yep. Well, I agree with, because of the time that we, the timeframe that we have in which to try and affect some changes that would benefit not just the sitting council, but for future councils, to have a council that's successful. If the past year and a half of our council meetings hasn't shown that to our public, certainly addressing the city charter so that they, as the taxpayers, have a say and help us to kind of define what it is they're looking for their council to represent, fully represent them. And because we have an election in the next year, it's just, if we wait to get it done, what happens is, we get an election, and this issue continues to get kicked down the road, and it doesn't change some of the, I guess, things that are causing the council right now not to be in unison. So I feel that I agree that maybe we should address it, and again, come after dealing with the articles, if we feel maybe we have to go in a different direction, at least we tried.
Yeah, because I think how it's structured during those two hours, one of the things in preparation of that is, if we tackle the first three articles of the first, the first meeting, is going to municode and making sure that there's no instances further of, you know, truncation, misrepresentation of wording based off of ordinance changes. And it's just, if nothing else, it's a chance for us to make sure that what's reflected to the public is in fact accurate, first and foremost. And they do that for the first three articles, you do that for the second three articles, and then get public feedback along the way. That way, there's no surprises when we get to a more formal meeting to say, is this something that we would want to put on a ballot or not? Then people come to that knowing how we've kind of gone through that thought process. But I don't see how it's, be construed as a politically driven or anything like that, it's just more of a, like, the investment policy earlier. I mean, we can't have documents that are 30 years stale. We can't, same thing with the charter, it's been over 10 years unless someone can tell me otherwise.
It's actually much older. Yeah, there was only one change in the last charter review, and that was to.
The creation of the CAO position.
Yeah, that was it. Everything else remained.
So.
Are you making a motion?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if it requires a formal motion, but general head to say, hey, let's get it scheduled for 5 to 7 before the next.
I think it's better to reformalize this.
Yeah.
Well, so we started out, six months ago, we've talked about the annexation. I mean, I think, are we going to just drop that, and we're going to pick this one up? Are we going to do the annexation?
What have we done with the annexation the last six months?
Huh?
What have we done with the annexation the last six months?
Well, that's my, my point is, do, if we want to bring up the annexation, I think that would be the precursor to the charter review.
And I, I mean, I think they're mutually exclusive. I mean, again, if I'm being completely honest, I mean, these annexation discussions or workshops have been, they've been a nightmare, because I think there's just so much misinformation around the intent of the city to enter into these conversations, and it runs the gamut. It goes from, the city's just trying to do a land grab, to, I don't understand why you would want it, like, it's just, there's confusion there. And that's why I've always said, from the very get-go with the annexation piece, was we need to find some mechanism that people can be surveyed to say, okay, outside of an environment where you feel like we're trying to push a whole bunch of information their way, it's, hey, here's generally what this is, are you happy with the services that you have with Orange County or not? If you win it to the city, what would be your expectation, a very, you know, like we did with the employee survey, it's, we're just doing the same thing with residents around their expectation of an annexation. In terms of the charter, I mean, that's a more overarching thing, because again, people that annex into the city may say, hey, I don't like the fact that the city of Apopka doesn't have single-member districts. I want someone to represent our area if we annex into the city, or things that are within those, the guiding document of the charter.
Well, that's my point, is if we include the annexation, and they might, they have, maybe have a different perspective on the charter.
Well, I think that what's, what we've missed in the city for the past decade is that this should be a living document. It should not be another, we'll see in 10 years. It should be every two years, every year, just a review of some sort to make sure that we're keeping up with what our residents demand.
Right. I mean, I see these peril tracks. I mean, one doesn't have to be dependent on the other, because again, to your point, Commissioner Nesta, I mean, we're in a city of rapid growth. I mean, there's been people talking about, oh, well, do you expand seats on the council? Things like this, too. I mean, these all need to be run around to say, hey, you know, if we expand our population by X percent over the period of five years or 10 years, that would be worthy of expanding our seats, or, you know, whatever the case might be, but I think these need to have be targeted conversations in this forum versus out on the campaign trail, and, you know, they become political talking points.
We can't have both items on the ballot at the same time?
I don't think that precludes us from having both.
I think that's the point, yeah, we can.
I don't think that's.
They're not mutually exclusive. We can do it all together, or one at a time.
With the annexation of the south side of Apopka, we really haven't gotten a consensus of, of its, is the community on board? I mean, you've been to the workshops, they were very divided. I mean, every time we had a workshop, we walked away much more divided by it, and a lot of uncertainty.
But, yeah, I don't think that this was throwaway work, though. I mean, I think it's a wise investment of time. I mean, we're talking about four hours total over the next two months to say, hey, we're taking a focused review of our charter to make sure that it's still what everybody's still on board with.
I just want to make sure, too, that we have a substantial amount of public input, that this does not take away anything in that capacity.
Of course.
And I also don't want to, if this timeline doesn't match up, then it is okay, and we just keep, if it doesn't get on this ballot, it doesn't get on this ballot, but we need to keep working. So I just, I don't want it to be a rushed process.
No, 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 that's not the intent. What I'm saying is that if there are things that we want to, that gives us the opportunity come December, the deadline, to say, yeah, this is something that we would want to have on this ballot, and to your point, there's stuff that would say, hey, we need to assess this a little bit further long-term.
Absolutely.
And that's totally fine. I think that's the prudent thing to do.
So you're making a motion to?
I would move that we, yeah, if we want it in a formal motion, I would say that we, I would move to have a charter review complete, or performed by this council in September and October, the two hours preceding the normally scheduled city council meetings, so 5 to 7 PM on those two days.
Okay. Cliff, do, is that something we, should we not have public comment on that? I mean, wouldn't it be better to?
Well, can you? The answer is sure, you can, but in terms of whether you need to, it's not an ordinance. Basically, you're deciding to review the charter is something that's always within your discretion.
Okay.
But certainly, if you want to open the floor to public comment, the meeting can be controlled however you want to.
Would that, would you be agreeable to at least have, put it on as a formal action item, next council meeting, and then we get public input from?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, because it wouldn't, it would be before the next, that's the day meeting. What I want to do is have it during the night meeting so people can attend, obviously, because we want to have the most feedback possible. But the next meeting is a day meeting. You're saying to have it on the agenda so that it's publicly noticed?
Yes.
People can weigh in on whether or not they want to have a committee forum or council forum of that review. But to our attorney's point, and for the sake of the people in this room watching, both avenues or both channels by which to do it still has public input.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, let me ask you this, are you going to change your opinion on what you're recommending tonight based on what residents say?
I just think that.
As a good rep.
Either one of you, both of you.
Well, as a good representative, I would say yes. Yes, I will, I will factor in their thoughts on the matter, but I will vigorously defend my viewpoint on the matter, which is to say, I agree with our council in the sense that we can be very targeted and crisp with our review of it, you know, if, again, with our council's remarks in the past few meetings, talking about how you can be very crisp with your review, we know this document pretty good, in and out.
We do.
And then it just comes down to the interpretation issue, right? But I would, I would fight for that form, but again, I would like to hear, I'm not naive to think that I don't have blind spots in my thinking here, so.
Can I throw in something else, just so people are on the timeline? It's really about timeline. Once you've completed your review, and you say, okay, we'd like to make a change, you come up with, you're basically telling me, we'd like to make this change, make it happen, give me the language, and whatever those things are. So you complete, I've taken notes, and then I bring back to you, okay, this is what I think you're asking for, you'll tell me, okay, yes, you got it, that's what should go on the ordinance, no, tweak this, whatever. But then what comes back to you is an ordinance. Remember, ordinance takes two readings, and so, and we, the December 12th date, I know in my head, because we have the same thing going on with Eatonville, and that's how I know it, we start, as I mentioned before, you start at the supervisory elections, and you work backwards. And so just make sure that whatever timetable we're on, we have time for two meetings, so the ordinance can have a second, and a first and a second reading. Other than that, good to go.
Yeah.
And it's not, I mean, that's the time that it works, and we also have the August, you know, primary, we've got the November, I mean, we've got, we have plenty of opportunities to put something on the ballot, I mean, but we, I go back to, you know, the annexation, we've been at this, and we haven't, we hadn't brought that forward as to, you know, any kind of resolution is where they're going to put it on the ballot or not, so.
Well, I don't think those are, and we've said that already, those aren't.
Sure.
Those are two different topics to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would like to have it on the next meeting so that we can discuss it formally and get the public's feedback.
Okay. All right. And so, attorney, so does that same deadline apply in reference to the annexation being on the ballot as well?
Anything that's going on this ballot for this presidential primary is December 12th.
Okay.
I happen, again, because that's the date Bill Cal gave out.
All right.
Because he's got, you know, he's kind of, he's done his own calculations, so he said, guys, this is the time. Whatever's on your ballot, that's the date.
Okay. All right.
And then I've got one last, and we're good as that being formally accepted, okay. And then one last thing, because Commissioner Velasquez did bring it up. My Aunt Barbara, Barbara Rudolph Smith, she passed away Friday. She lived here in Apopka, a long time in Apopka, and she moved to Pines de Wakava, and we would always take Welch Road over from Altamont Springs, back when, when that Publix there at Welch, and Rock Springs Ridge was out in the middle of nowhere, right? Kind of like the one up in, on Kelly Park right now. She lived in Pines de Wakava for a long time, and then she moved to Lake Avenue here, close to downtown. So I just want to give a little bit of a PSA for her, because she passed away, and for her because she, she passed away of adenoid cystic carcinoma, which is a cancer of the salivary gland. So get checked. She would have, let me tell you to get checked, the people watching here too. But she will be missed. But thank you for the, for the nice condolences that I've received thus far. She will be missed. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, just want to repeat that I was at the Windex grand opening and at the sneak preview on the night before as well. And I think it's going to be a great asset in addition to our community, especially looking at the turnout that was there this morning was outstanding. I spoke to the lady that was the first one in the door and she said she was there at five o'clock to get in line. So it's going to be a great addition. So we welcome Windex to our community. Also at the Florida League of Cities Convention that we attended last week, there was mentioned that there's plenty of money for infrastructure grants. And so I'd like for our city to look into that, to get some of those funds so we can make a difference in the infrastructure here in our cities as we continue to grow. One thing that I, I missed, and I don't know, maybe they were there, I didn't see them, but I didn't see our youth council. And that was one of the things that I asked early on. And I was told that there was funds that was in our budget for the youth council to attend this convention and they were not there. I saw many other cities that had the youth councils present. And so that's something that, that I still would like to see this city, our youth council attend the FLC convention. I'm in favor of the charter review and that's all I have.
Mr. Nesta?
I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Velasquez for referencing Lawrence's grandfather, Robert or Bob Smith. He was actually a long time Apopka resident, very instrumental in a few different things. And I learned a few of the things yesterday at his funeral. One of them was that he was one of the four founding members of our local Sertoma. So I thought that was very cool. The Ace Hardware here, he actually, before it was Ace Hardware, it was called Lumberjacks. He owned that and then actually sold it to Ace Hardware. And then one of the things that I guess a quote that he often lived by was it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. So I just thought that was a really cool sentiment that he lived by, that we can all absolutely live by. So thank you for everyone's condolences. I just want to say that Lawrence's dad, so the son of Bob Smith, did, did really well handling the service and running with that. So kudos to him. Next is on to more city stuff. And this for our attorney. In reference to real estate transactions throughout the city, whether it's leasing, for sale, whatever it may be, who has the power and in what capacity do we have to lease properties? Is our unilateral power, is it up to the council?
Well, certainly it's not unilateral and it depends on specifically in your city, where the property is located. So if it's in the CRA, any kind of ability to dispose of it by lease, sale, giveaway, has to be done through a 163.380 notice process. Minimum 30 days can be longer in which you essentially put it out to the public and say, this is what we'd like to do with this property. For example, let's suppose you'd say, we think we need more retail. And if you will give us the kind of retail we want, we'll give you this piece of property. That's an example. Now, what kind of things you put in the notice about what you'd be looking for, that's up to you guys, but that's for CRA property. If it's out the, inside the CRA property, comes under a different set of rules and has to do with fair market value. In a CRA, one of the unique features of a CRA is you don't have to get fair market value, just fair value. And y'all get to determine what that is. And it's because the idea of a CRA piece of property, whether it's leased, sold or whatever, is that you're getting something back that coordinates with whatever your plan is, whatever it is you want to do with your CRA. So that's the, that's the answer to your question.
And then, so outside of the CRA, it does have to be fair market value?
Fair market versus fair, yes.
And who decides fair market value?
Well, typically when cities are trying to get that, they get opinions of value from either qualified appraisers. That's the, kind of the gold standard. And sometimes they'll use realtors that have been dealing with the property and they well respect the community. But the gold standard is an appraiser.
And then, so let's say we do lease one in either one of those. Does that lease have to come back for approval or what does that look like?
That I don't know. That's going to be driven by your charter, but probably yes.
There's nothing in our charter that references real estate. There's nothing in our charter that references real estate.
Well, it's going to be, when I say that, it's going to be based on authority. You'd have to go back and see, and I, I haven't memorized it yet, but I'll try to get there. But you know, there's certain, in your charter, because of a strong mayor, I wouldn't even have to ask the question. I would know it would come back here. But because you have a strong mayor, I have to go back and look at the list of the things that the mayor has sole authority over. And I don't know that that's in there, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
It's not. But if you can look that up and confirm there, we have a lot of what I would call distressed properties that we own, both within the CRA and outside, that would be condemned if it was not city owned property. And we have a lot of groups that are ready to put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to make them look good under a lease. So I would like to know what that process looks like very formally, so I can then detail that to the individuals that are interested in moving forward in that process. Do I need to make a formalization of that request or is that something that?
Well, I, when you get to my report, I got a question about that myself. So if you, if you hold up, I'll.
No problem.
Because I need some direction from y'all.
Yeah, I bet. And then I'm sure we've all gotten the emails about the reference of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I didn't know if anybody, what the council's desire is on that. I know we've gotten those emails a few different times from a resident. I know different municipalities, HOAs, things like that, are changing it from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'm just curious if that's something we are going to look at.
In my viewpoint, I sent that out to a couple of different organizations to get their feedback. And so I'm waiting for a response.
Okay. And I mean, everyone else, I guess, put some thought into that and let me know otherwise. I just, that's been brought up multiple times, to me at least. And I've, I've been CC'd on all of our emails. So would like to have a definitive word on that. And then I know, and I, because we didn't formalize it, I'm sure that's why it didn't happen. I felt like we agreed that there needed to be a shade meeting for the fire union negotiations. So I don't know if I need to formalize a vote right now so that we can get that on the next meeting.
It will be on the next, yeah, it will send under my report.
Of course it was. All right. Well, that's it for me.
And before the mayor gives the report, I just want to say both of you have my condolences as well.
Thank you.
I'm just learning of the death of both of your family members. And so you definitely have my condolences.
Yeah. And it's, my Aunt Barbara had a very good relationship with your mother, Mayor.
Yeah.
So she was, and her, and her remarks that she wrote down, your mom was one that she definitely wanted to, to thank for all of her, her friendship. So.
All right. So the shade meeting is going to be on the next?
This is the labor thing?
Yes.
Yeah. It's the only pure exemption to the sunshine law. You don't get a court reporter. You don't, basically you just notice it, but it's, it's completely and totally out of the sunshine. Other shade meetings where litigation's involved is a whole different deal. But this one's a whole, this one's separate.
Okay. So.
I didn't know. I didn't know. Do I come after you?
You're, you're, you're before me.
Okay. All right. So first, just to finish off the charter discussion, as Commissioner Becker knows and will lead me into the other things, is it, when he brought me an envelope of stuff from my guest, is it Mr. Wilkinson?
Mr. McKinley.
McKinley, okay. I didn't know where it came from. But at any rate, it was like, oh, how could it possibly be that MuniCode has this thing that's Xed out? And I didn't know. And it turns out, just ironically, we're going through charter review and Eatonville, as I've mentioned, and they had a similar situation of something that was in the charter, a whole section that was in the charter that had never been voted on because it was an ordinance and was never supposed to be in the charter. So I got to ask Apopka's question about your charter issue and Eatonville's at the same time. And for both situations, MuniCode said, we screwed up with no other explanation other than we screwed up. I don't know that I'm going to get a better explanation to the point of someone asking, well, how did they do? I don't know. It, but it did raise the issue. And certainly I've shared the information with you and I think copied Mr. Vavrick. I, I never knew I had to be concerned about MuniCode getting things correct. That's just not something that you ordinarily think of.
Do they have errors and omissions in our contract language? Because to your point, they've gone and mentioned about how we owe them a payment for their services.
The answer is I, I don't know. But I would certainly say that if there's a time to negotiate that payment, this would be the time. Because I, as you've recognized, and as the same happened in Eatonville, it creates stress because everybody, how did that happen and who's it? They just got it wrong. So I don't know, but I'm really grateful that it was brought to our attention because we'd start, just as we did in Eatonville, we started a charter view thinking that's the deal. And but for a former mayor getting involved in an advisory capacity saying, that's never been voted on. I'm going like, it's in the, it has to be. But it wasn't. So A, organizations, including MuniCode are fallible. So we're going to obviously see what we can do to make sure that everything is as it should be. They did make the changes to both of those charters today. But that leads me to point number two, which is, and I'm using some of my memory from when I was here the last time, but it's also consistent with what we do in every other city. And I want to make sure that this is not something that y'all want me to do differently. So that was Mr. Becker's request, Vice Mayor Becker's, the request for the attorney opinion on the termination thing. That was the Mayor Nelson. I'm not sure which came first regarding the finance issue, but at any rate, my understanding of my role is I can be requested to give opinions from any of you, any department head and the CAO. So whether it was Ms. Velasquez or the head of Public Works or Jim Hitt, that any, any one of you all in those capacities have authority to ask for any opinions. And if they're under those people, like for example, if you were the assistant head of planning and you got permission from Jim Hitt, then you could call me and ask me to do an opinion. So that's, and that's fairly standard stuff. But if that's not the way you guys want to do it, then let me know. The other thing, and this is why it ties into the charter thing, is because you asked for the opinion, I wrote it to you or got the information to you and then copied Mr. Vavrick with the idea that he then distributed to council. I don't know, but I have no problem. Because once I write it, it's public record. I'm happy, if that's the process you want me to do, to send everything to everybody. I just want to make sure I can do what you want.
Yeah. The latter, the latter part, I think is, because the former, how you described how you receive information, request for clarification, because I may just ask you an open ended question. And in your eyes, that's, you're providing a legal interpretation. In my eyes, I'm just like, am I right in my thinking or not? But I think we should always be able to funnel that through you. But I think our expectation is once you give that opinion, that's very formal. A lot of the ones that you're providing opinions on is stuff that we've talked up here on the dais. So just us all getting at the same time is what ultimate outcome is all about.
Again, particularly now, the last thing I want to do is get on the wrong side of anybody because I realize that this seat has been a hot one before. And it could be hot again because my opinions are going to be my opinions. But I don't want it to be because y'all didn't get them. I'm happy to give them.
Right. And I know, because I, I spoke to him yesterday. It was like, anytime you write an opinion, can you make sure that we all get it?
I don't have a problem with that at all. I, I assumed the channel of communication was through the, the CAO. That's all.
Yeah. So you got an opinion?
No, if, when, if you rewind all the way back to the beginning of the charter review conversation, remember Mr. Shepherd had said that he'll work with me. That ultimately turned into a telephone conversation the day of the next meeting that says, you know, we haven't, we hadn't connected between that two week period. And I just said, why don't you just deliver what you were going to deliver to me specifically, just to the whole council as one, so that you're not running into this scenario? And so I think that's really what we're trying to get after is if you're providing the opinion, just we're all CC'd at the same time. That's it.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. If that's, if that's the will of council, I'm happy to do it. It'd make my life easier because I don't have to worry.
Okay. So the question is, did he do it? Did I have that? Do you, do I have that opinion he wrote me?
Well, it was verbal.
Oh, okay.
Because he was, that was the one where he was talking about the do, the two avenues by which to do the charter review. Either us selecting a formal, large committee or having a council led charter review. And that's, and he went over that maybe two meetings ago.
Yeah, two meetings. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Mayor's report, start out for the youth council, just, I wasn't even going to bring it up, but need students to apply. We've only got one student that's applied so far. So we went out to Wakava today on, try to get to, I'll, I'll see the folks from Apopka tomorrow, try to get kids engaged for this next year's youth council. So we're, we need, we need students. So anybody out there that wants a student that's going to learn something, get, and also get their, their community service hours, Apopka is the place. Next up, let me, I'll go back to the next step. Just, I know Commissioner Becker kind of, some of the timeline and everything that he said was correct. The only thing I guess maybe was left out is that the reason we, we had the 150 as an earmark, we thought we had a, an offer, a purchase of a building that would have met our needs. And then at that point, we would have come back. It dragged, it drug on, drug on, drug on. And then a year or two, years later, it, it vanished. And the price went up. And so, you know, we, we had a, we had a, we had a vision. We had, we had a location. It just, the location at the end of the day didn't work out. So, you know, it's not anybody's fault, but, but the seller decided to sell it for more money. And so there we go. But anyway, so that's the, the next step. Next up, you know, Windex, you talked about Windex, great, great opening. You know, golly, just unbelievable amount of people. We talked about the shade meeting, next meeting. That's good. Let's see here. Onto my Parks and Rec team, which I tell you what, they knocked out of the park last, at least, well, this whole summer. We had the, as they mentioned, the Dirty Heads concert, over 9,000 people. The, the parking was flawless. I told Riley, be sure to bottle that up for the next concert of that magnitude. But even with softball and baseball going on, we were able to, you know, fill up how many cars and got them, everybody parked and efficiently in and efficiently out. So kudos to the Parks and Rec staff for that. These, these, with that, yeah, I can show you, this is, this is from the Michael Fronte concert. They had like 7,000 people there on the, on the far right. He's got a really nice video that they put together, Deuterman, that for that, for, you know, for his folks to sell that, our venue to, to the outside world. So really excited about what, what the potential is. And I, I have to go back, I'll give the Parks and Rec team the kudos. When COVID shut us down and they said, hey, Mayor, let's have some free concerts out there, it turned, you know, what was a very, very underutilized facility to something that we're starting to get a lot of notice. And we've had multiple people at, at the higher levels tell us it's the best facility they, they, they go to. So a lot of kudos for our team that keeps that place, you know, humming. And we're, we're excited for that.
Well, Mayor, I know that you probably follow Sublime on Facebook.
Yes, all the time.
They posted a video today actually saying that Apopka was the loudest place that they've been to so far on their tour.
How about that? I knew that all along. I could tell it was loud. Next up on Parks and Rec, Camp Weewaw Pool. I know there's been some, some dialogue, discussions back and forth, but still waiting, I guess she's already left, waiting for school board. It's not really school board birds issue, but waiting for the, the attorneys at the school board to sign off on the agreement, the joint use for the, the pool out at Weewaw. But we're now, it was an event Monday night, and Wakava's looking for space to have their, their swim team as well. And so we're trying to accommodate them. We've already, we'd already had Apopka already booked. We've got Wakava booked and Special Olympics. And we're, it's a juggling, a juggling act to keep all three parties happy. But we're excited to have, you know, from, from right after school until dark 30, we'll have kids out there in the pools just working hard to, to better themselves in the pool. So we're really excited about that. Like to give a big shout out to the building department for, you know, the Windex could have gone a lot smoother, but it wouldn't have happened at all without our building department really getting out there, making sure that we got all the safety features were, were, were up, up, up to snuff. And I think, you know, the, the proof's in the pudding. It was a really, really nice grand opening. We're excited to be there. And then last but not least, if you get a chance tomorrow, probably need to do it tomorrow morning, at Central Avenue in Orange, they're finishing up, you know, we put in the budget last year $50,000 for the Brick Streets. And one of the biggest problems we've had for years and years and years is right at the, at the intersection, there's a manhole that sticks about, you know, at least 24 inches above. So if you were going over in a low hung car, you, you tear out your transmission. So they're fixing that intersection and it'll be, should be completed tomorrow. So if you get a chance, go by and look at what our contractor does. And I know in the budget for this year, we've got another $25,000. So instead of 50, we'll have 75,000 in the budget to, to go and find those, the biggest.